Okay, sorry if it's a little loud in the Zoom recording because there's, I don't know, the storm finally hit, so it's hitting the windows, but maybe you can't hear it. So I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, April 29th, to order at 7:04 PM. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Oh, actually, I guess the first thing I'll mention is Pat's not here. Pat, are you, are you able to be a voting member tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so Pat is not here, but he is a voting member this evening. So first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for March 25th, 2025.
I move that we accept the minutes of March 25.
Motion by Lisa.
Okay.
Second by, I think I saw Pat's hand first, so second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. So this is an opportunity for anyone from the public to bring up any topic that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Ainsley covering for the board.
Hey, Susan. Okay, hearing other comments, I'll undertake a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
So the next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit number 2025-4851. Angie Innes proposing to open a daycare and after-school program in a portion of the building care, or the building located at 2343 North Triphammer Road, tax parcel number 47.1-3-5, which is owned by Lama Brothers LLC. The proposal is a change of use with a change in applicable parking needed, which requires a special permit in the commercial medium traffic district.
You're going to where Angie is meeting.
Angie's not here.
What related, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, in the past, so, well, maybe I should let you keep going. But I think we should just postpone this if nobody is here because, you know, even in the past, I realized we have larger projects and small projects from away. I think at the very first meeting, we should really encourage people to be here.
Yep, no, absolutely.
Insist, I would like it to be our policy.
Yep.
And then after that Zoom makes a lot of sense, but I really think it's important. I think after we dealt with the mall people, that became very clear that this was an important thing to meet down face to face the first time out.
Especially because, I know myself, I have a lot of questions about the state here.
Yeah.
No, absolutely, I'm fine with that. I did want to just at least read the agenda items, so I am all in favor of postponing it until Angie or a representative from the project can be here. I think we just postpone it. There's no further discussion, so we'll table it until the next meeting. If you want to, if Angie gets ahold of you, if you want to get ahold of them.
Do you table it or just postpone?
We table it, so we're not going to open up the public hearing because, yeah, nobody here to discuss.
I was just asking about the nomenclature, if whether table had a specific meaning as opposed to just postponing it.
We're just not taking any action on it tonight at all, opening or?
So we're not opening a public hearing or anything.
So we'll just wait to hear from them.
Yeah, Michael reached out to Angie and said.
Second her car off the parking lot.
I was gonna say, well, the phone has not rang though. No, I was gonna say, I think, in general, move on.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to continue the discussion of tree law changes. The planning board will look to review changes recommended by the Board of Trustees to the local tree law. So a couple of meetings ago now, we did make our recommendation. Lisa and Lorraine, thank you so much for going and having a discussion with them. It was a good discussion. If you haven't watched the, if you haven't watched the video of it, there's a lot of good discussion around it. They did have some suggestions to come back to the planning board to talk about, so we will talk about those tonight. I don't know Lisa or Lorraine, if you want to.
Well, we made, we made all the changes that were suggested and that we discussed, and I sent everything to Natalie. Natalie has put it in the format. I think right now Natalie answered two of our questions, well, the one question about the DEC information that will also under resources. And then Lisa was working with Jody, right?
Well, I didn't work with Jody yet, but you have to decide whether we're gonna.
To purchase that?
Yes. I mean, we know that it's 200 essentially $30 for the next three years. I did not call the fellow and get into it until I thought we were going to make the commitment, but I really, I can't imagine how much this changed.
The tree care standards.
Yeah.
So the question is that in Appendix H, we have what I would assume would be some sort of link to the tree care standards, or we anticipate being to provide them in the appendix?
Well, the thing is, if you, if we buy the digital bundles, I'm understanding it, his email said we then can disseminate that from our office, and I would think that we should give it to people.
If we're gonna ask them to buy that.
If we're gonna ask them to buy that.
Yes, I agree.
Because just let, we want this to be easy for them.
Yep.
So we can apparently just print them as much as we want to for the next three years.
It's almost like purchasing the license.
Yeah, exactly. And, and God knows whether they'll really even get to envision the next.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
And it was kind of funny. I said to you, if you wanted to go on the link. So I went on the link because it's the Tree, Tree, or Parishenberg, Tree whatever, TCIA. And I, but they had a typo in their link, and it was T I. And I was clicking on it thinking, doesn't feel right. And it came up to be something about the Cat Association of America. It was hysterical, I got totally sidetracked, and there are all these cat shows across the year. So I did write him and say, there was a little bit of a typo. So I didn't want to call him right away.
Yeah. So the question is then, if it is like subject to change, is it something we really want to include in the appendix? Or one of the main suggestions out of the trustees meeting is that we not have Appendix I that we envision being guidelines in the actual appendix, that just be a separate attachment or page on the village website for resources? So would it be best to add the tree standards, since they're subject to change, to that resources page and have printed copies in the office versus in the appendix where if we have to change out the standards, really then we should amend the appendix for every time they amend, they change the standards?
Can we hold them to these things then, if it isn't in the?
Well, it's in the statute.
So it doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't matter. We're just providing this as like, I would assume, a convenience to people.
Yes, yes.
But it's still in the statute that they have to abide by that, those standards.
Oh, okay. I don't see a problem with that.
What did he, I'm trying to remember Lisa without going back and looking. He said, once it's updated, the version now is good until, what, 2028?
Yes, three more years.
Okay, which is a long time.
Yeah, I mean, for $230, I mean, if we can't afford that.
Yeah, well, I think that the village can afford that. Yes, it's in the general requirements for.
Yeah, we said that they must meet that.
Yes.
It's just whether we can hold them to that as a standard, because that was one of the reasons H was all standards.
It's in the law as a requirement.
Yeah, okay.
I have no trouble with that.
Angie.
Okay.
One other question about that. In terms of keeping it updated, does it make, is there any impact on whether it's just a resource on the website versus an appendix as to how proactively the village will update it?
How we, how we update our resources, you mean?
Mm-hmm. I think it would be given the same level of attention.
Okay. Fair. That's a great answer. We can unpack this during the session.
It's like a lost treasure, just text with law school like that.
We shouldn't all be laughing quite so hard, should we?
Well, in all fairness, though, I mean, I think that's the goal, right? So if there's things that we should, we've got a lot of these things. I mean, like guidelines, standards, that aren't necessarily, you know, in the step, but you know, we should, and I think that we do kind of have a list of them somewhere. Just going and checking on these things once a year.
It's a calendaring situation.
Yeah, it is, that's all it is.
Needs to be calendared for a follow-up in three years.
Every, you know, and whatever, maybe the right time of year is, you know, right before spring, you know, kind of late winter to go, for some of these things at least, to go and check up on them before, you know, the local laws come into effect that they really pertain to.
Mm-hmm.
Versus some other ones, maybe, you know, maybe there's some things in the winter that summer is the right time to do, but yeah, we should make a list. We can check on these things and just make sure that there aren't any huge changes to them that, you know, go against the intent of what we were hoping for, thinking about when we included these things.
So at this point then, Appendix H, all we're really going to have in there is a tree unit table. Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Because the other stuff's in, what's the other?
The other was gonna go into I, but there are.
Resources, okay.
It turns out there already isn't.
Right, there's already Appendix I, yeah.
I don't, don't, I don't know. I don't need to know.
That's what they told us anyway when we asked.
For a second, I'm not super intelligent. What is the difference between?
You should never start a sentence that way.
Appendices and reference is one enforceable, one is not.
Yes.
That's how it goes.
And one needs to be amended by local law.
That's the main thing. That's why I say.
Resource paper. We can update your website as you see fit. We're not holding them to those standards, except this one will be in the statute that is required. The other items, the planting list from Huga Landscape, all the other resources that were put together by Lisa and Lorraine, those are just guidelines that we would like.
Right, but we can push for those guidelines as we review planting plans and things like that.
Alert people to them to reference.
Certain parts of the Uniform Code, we have the same thing. We have appendices which are not enforceable, they're more of a guideline.
Oh, the reverse?
So I'm like, okay.
It's the opposite of what you meant.
Yes. That's why, that's the only reason I'm making sure.
Well, that's why I asked too, is if it's in the resources, can we enforce it? But if it's stated in the code, we can, we can.
Right, if that, yeah.
Well, we can always try anyway.
Okay, right, it's another, you know, it's another iteration of, you know, what it is we're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
Not to, not to change the subject, but we did get alerts. I don't know if every.
I just said that one.
Said to take cover. Oh, take.
Undercover.
North what, north?
Undercover.
This county.
I'm not getting, I'm not getting.
Don't we have a generator here?
I got a Tompkins. I got a county level one in Siren. Did you get it too?
I got the Tompkins County Siren.
Mine popped up on the.
There is 7:15, we're fine, it's 7:16.
It's already passed.
Already calmed down. Mine says, north central, north and central Tompkins County.
Ask, ask now. We'll just ask Pat how the weather is at his house.
Right, north central Tompkins, yeah. Huga, Huga County and north central Tompkins County.
Showed up by Ledyard and Genoa.
Okay.
We're okay, hearing about Pat is causing big trouble.
I know, the village being as big as it is.
Keep an eye on that for us and keep us posted on it.
It's heading our way.
I'd say let us know if your power goes out, but I think we'll know.
Not necessarily.
True, that's true. His might go out and ours.
I'm on the same grid as, as, as here.
I was thankful I was not on the same.
I think it's already come. At any rate, so are we ready to send this along then?
Yeah, are there any other topics that we wanted to discuss with it? But other than that, you know, the recommendations that the trustees had, I think.
They were very reasonable and valid.
It was great, I rewatched the video, I was like, it was a good discussion. And then, yeah, there's this one we can.
Yeah, I'll make this change and forward it on to them.
Okay, do we, do I need to send another letter to the trustees? Just to say we discussed, or is it open?
I don't think you can. I can just forward this on to them.
Okay.
Lorraine and Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for.
Oh my God, I get, we finally did this entire. Not yet, you might need an interview.
I feel like you have milk crates for specific projects.
I do, actually.
And when I say milk crates, I mean more than one for some projects.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is discussion of village code changes and corrections.
Oh, we talked about assigning maybe a handful of sections for, assigning a handful of uses of the use chart that we can look at and determine what it means. Bring, bring back something to the board where, okay, this really doesn't make sense. What do you think about it? And then we were not just going down through each use and discussing it all night, forever.
No, we have to do something.
Yeah.
I have something for you as far as a recommendation on how to keep it consistent with, within the districts for alteration with the change in parking, and a recommendation to eliminate the words in special permit where it says not subject to special permit.
Yes, yes.
It's just to be viewed.
Yeah, yeah.
So I've got that simplified, but I'm sorry, I don't have that for you, so. But I mean, if there's other ways of doing this, I think there was a good idea the last time we spoke about separating it, like Kamila take five cases.
So I wonder if, and I'm fine with just delving them out to people, and this is just a question for you all, are you comfortable doing it yourself, given, say, one through five, or, you know, pick a number? Would you rather, you know, work with one other person on it? There's enough of us where we can delve it out to like two people per chunk of sections? Or it was just a thought? If you're all comfortable doing a chunk by yourself, it will be faster.
You know what I would love to see happen? I would love for us to tackle a chunk together to set a precedent for the kinds of expectations that we have, and then we all go off in our corners and do.
Because we talked about setting, you had a bunch of guidelines last time.
Yeah, I was gonna rewatch the video today and take them out.
I forgot what you said, but it was like, we should all be attacking this. Were you here that night? I'm not sure you.
I think it was on Zoom.
And, and she brought up these, it was like, oh, we should all do the same thing again.
Oh, rewatch the video.
So if you have those guidelines, Natalie, and we have like an example chapter that we all work through together?
Let's walk through it. Maybe something, I don't want to say super easy where there's not a lot of discussion, but something where there could be topics.
Yeah.
And then we can work with that together and then delve out, start delving out chunks.
Yeah.
Again, by yourself, or if you want to work with another person, again, by yourself, it'll be a lot faster.
Better if we just each are responsible.
What's that, Pat?
I think it's a little more difficult too to.
Yeah.
Yeah. An easy and a hard.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay.
And we're gonna do 145, and are we gonna do 125 to the subdivision thing?
Why don't you let me review 125?
Okay.
Because there's really not.
There were some issues though, weren't there? I mean, are they pretty much under control?
I mean, you went through that once.
And we did some fixes.
Yeah, and we found.
Some cut lines and stuff.
Lot line changed, and also some other thing we did had to do with subdivision and special permit for subdivision or something like that.
So we're just gonna deal with 145.
Make some clarity regarding public hearing closing and dates of when action had to happen.
Would you like me to briefly go through that?
I was just asking, whatever we think is necessary. Yeah, after, yeah, we need to do this first. But I was just.
Okay.
So would you like me to pick out a couple of juicy uses for that?
Juicy?
Not, not too juicy, maybe.
I would do one easy, one a little juicy.
Slightly juiced.
Yeah.
If you can, if you can find something like that, pick that up. Something in there, anything? Yeah, I'll find something for you.
So we'll do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's move, we'll do the, we'll do the once around after this. I do, let's move the trustee report up ahead. I know that.
Who's on there?
I, yeah, I forget, but I know that there is somebody coming in to talk about potential interest in being on the planning board. I sent everybody an email earlier. I think they said they wouldn't be able to be here till about 7:30, and we kind of moved through some of these things faster. There was going to be the, the other public hearing, but that passed. So let's, let's do the trustee report, then we can do the once around and talk about stuff before they show up.
Okay. It's me. I have two for the month.
Yes.
Okay, so the first one, and I have a lot of information, but you would just want me to give you the, the short version of everything. So the meeting, the first meeting was April 7th. The first thing on the agenda was the trustees appointed Joshua Johani as a community representative for the, to the Tompkins County Joint Youth Commission. I don't know if anybody knows him, but he's a village resident, and he's, him and his wife are both Cornell students. They moved to New York City and then came back to the area after COVID in 2021. He's also running for county legislature for District 7.
Our job, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, he gave up a whole little overview on himself, and at that time, he mentioned that his wife was a planner. I don't know if Kamila knows her, her name is Anna Johani. But anyway, she got her HPP at Cornell. So anyway, I'll keep moving on. So the second thing on the, the public hearing for the proposed local law C tax override, they voted to adopt and change the local law C to local law 3. And then they approved, they approved the budget. And if you want to see the whole summary, you can watch the video, but I don't know if anybody's interested in knowing how much the village has in their budget, but their general fund budget is $3,422,000. Their water fund is $1,584,000, and the sewer fund is $1,822,000. And then they gave a bunch of general highlights, which were the same highlights that were in the newsletter that went out. They also, they were planning on discussing Lansing Meadows Eastman's, but the paperwork hadn't been done, so they saved that for the next meeting. And then it was the discussion of the tree law proposal, which I don't think we need to go through that. And the only thing, the last thing was Ronnie mentioned that there was a climate smart community application submitted for bronze level. And let's see, the second meeting was April 21st, and first on the agenda was the updated PDA request for 20 BOMAX. So they resubmitted their proposal, they're going back to their original plan from when they presented to us in September 2023. They, they're now talking about parcel A, which was the original parcel where the building is already at. They still want to include parcel B, but not to develop it at this time. So that's what they said, right? And I asked them, I asked them how many units they're talking still for parcel A, and it's 261. Anyway, so there was a lot of back and forth. I know Carolyn brought up that, told them that they would need to request a zoning change for the property since it clearly sits in the business and tech, you know, zoning. And Ronnie's still concerned about the height restriction. Lisa also piped in and talked about segmentation. Anyway, Ronnie, the bottom line is Ronnie said that there still needs to be a discussion with the Village of Kiva Heights wastewater treatment plant to see if 20 BOMAX, their calculations fit and with their vision. And I think he's encouraging them to propose a meeting time for the village trustees, the Village of Kiva Heights, and the planning board. That's how they left it, and I think they left it up to them.
Yeah, we're, we're having a meeting about the sewer units and calculations, water consumption on Thursday night here, so.
But I know Ronnie talked about, he wanted the planning board involved so it doesn't have to be repeated multiple times, didn't he? Or was that for a second meeting?
This is just myself and Ronnie and John Courtney and Brett Ross.
Oh, oh, okay.
Internal meeting, not.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, no, I think Ronnie was talking about it.
Okay, so if the, I mean, if the trustees do want to have a joint meeting about it, though, we do have that.
Yeah, and he rescheduled. Ronnie did mention that at the meeting, you know, we have a joint meeting in July. You know, I don't know if he said July, but we have a joint meeting coming up.
It's coming up, yeah.
Anyway, so nothing changed there.
Their first or our, their second?
This one is theirs.
Their meeting, but I don't know.
The one in January is ours, the one in July is theirs. Moving forward, that's kind of the.
I don't know if it's their first or their.
Yeah, I don't know which, yeah, I don't know which one it is. It was in the newsletter.
It seemed the first.
Oh, it was.
I put it in the newsletter because I had to look at it three times to make sure I didn't mess up to him in July.
Oh, do you need to know the date?
Well, just, I'm just.
We're gonna look it up.
I can look it up.
It's not necessary at this point, but I just think I better get my head in that.
They didn't seem to have much interest in the whole mixed use, which I was very disappointed with. It would seem that if you had that many units of maybe a first floor, you could put a coffee shop.
Oh, I know, that would be like, great.
Very convenient for people that are living there.
And around there.
Very responsive to it.
I know Kathleen brought up the mixed use.
Yeah, but that came up by several people, trustees mentioned it. No, it's just, I don't know, we'll see. I, I just am very concerned, having gone through the whole Lansing Meadows thing about parcel B. I want it all out, I want it all approved, and if a single thing changes, we start over because just been there, done that. And you know, what we started with and what we ended up with is just, it's, that was why I said segmentation. Ronnie, I think, actually said, if you approve this as a PD, you're gonna have to assume parcel B is just part of the deal. But I don't, I'm not personally comfortable with that, but I'm one person, so.
I wonder how that works. Like, there's projects that come here where they say, we're thinking about this, we're thinking about that, we're thinking about this. This one, they've literally presented plans to us for, here's what we want to do with all the property we own.
Yeah.
So now if they're saying, oh, well, we just mean A.
Yeah.
Mine multiple times, and, and this is my personal opinion, they just act very wishy-washy to me, and it's, nothing's ever very clear. Like, they're just, I don't know.
Well, it's, yeah, they're excited about certain things, but I, I have, there's a lot of work to be done here.
Yeah.
And, and as to whether it's quite the right fit, I don't know. It depends on what they, yeah, they have to make it more attractive than just 250 units you have 60 feet high.
And then also, they're giving us an ultimatum. It's either this or it's a storage facility. And he turned right, remember Lisa, he turned right, he goes, well, what would you rather have? Do you want this or do you want a storage facility? And I said, a storage facility.
Depends, you haven't presented a storage facility. You have comments about that too.
Did you hear him when he said that to me?
I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, right, Peter was here, yeah. Yeah, he turned right around, well, because I was talking, because it's my neighborhood, and I'm going to advocate for my neighborhood, and I don't want to see this in my neighborhood for many reasons. And, but yeah, he turned around and goes, well, what would you rather have? Do you want, you know, if it's not this, it's going to be a storage facility. That's exactly what he said to me.
Is it?
Well, that was one of the arguments.
But I would have the, but the mixed use.
They have to appeal for that, do they need a special permit?
Business and tech. I was just gonna say.
Anyway.
But anyway, I'm, the mixed use though, I agree. I would love to have a coffee shop there. I mean, people in the neighborhood.
It's actually a really, I mean, yeah, it's a good, there, you know, there's, right, and this is why we have people on the planning board and the trustees from different pockets around the village. Yeah, I mean, if somebody wanted to put in a coffee store next to another coffee store.
Or even a.
But I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people up that way and maybe they're.
A lot of people are walking. People would be walking up to that little shop or whatever.
I ran up past there today and wish I hadn't because it was hot outside.
Wish you could have gotten a nice coffee there.
I wish I could have stopped and had a nice iced coffee on the way, that would have been great.
No, there's got to be some.
I do have a date, by the way, that I found. I'm curious if you found one if it matches up with what I have.
For what?
For the joint meeting.
July 21st.
That's what I have too.
7:30.
7:30 though, yes, yes.
7:30. Anyway, and the last thing was Lansing Meadows and all, all the information was received. And so they addressed both resolutions and each of the resolutions were addressed individually and passed.
So where does that leave us with Lansing Meadows?
That leaves it with me.
Eric has done all he needs to do.
Yes, all we're getting right now.
What's the date that that all happened? Is that a week ago?
Yeah, it's about a week ago. 21st, isn't I saying?
We're just waiting on Adam Priscini to draw up the changes for a final sweep so we can sign the notice of termination. And then I can issue the CFCs and we're done.
And then we just sit and look at whatever's left forever.
What about the escrow, are those still?
Yeah, we need to review those.
Okay, so they're ours.
We still have them.
Progress was made and. That's great.
20 years.
Is it really?
No, it's only been, okay, I got on in 2010 and it was just BJ's, it was just starting, so it's been almost 15.
15, oh.
Yeah. I think 15 is safe to say, actually.
Okay.
And that is why this BOMAX thing is really important. And, and the fact of the matter is, is we do not have to grant a PDA. We do not have to grant a PDA if we don't feel it is in the best interest of the.
Right, there could be, there could be.
There are some real good reasons to do something.
There could be a good incentive to the village and everybody to do that, and that's great. Or not.
Well, we have, and, and it can't be just frivolous, I just don't like it.
Yeah.
But I think that there's, you know, a PDA can be wonderful. Should be wonderful.
Right, it should, right, it should be a good balance between, clearly there's a developer, they're trying to do their thing, but.
And something creative and inventive, wonderful, just, I mean, you should all read it very carefully.
And there's plenty of space to do something really unique, creative, inventive, whatever you want to call it there. There's plenty of space to do it. You're not really constrained into some, well, here's the only thing I can do on this, you know, 10 acre thing, no.
One of the things that Carolyn brought up was, you know, reading directly from the PDA is about density. You know, there are limits to what the PDA suggests so that, you know, it doesn't exceed more than X percent of the underlying district. I think it was 25%, I forget. But I mean, I have to go back and I think we all need to go back and really look at the PDA. What it says and be really thinking hard about it.
So the next step for that one is there?
We'll see.
You're having a meeting Thursday.
For sewer, for water calculations. I'm not sure it's going to go very far, but.
Next step?
Yeah, for them, I don't know, they'll have to, well, the next step I would imagine is going to be for the board of trustees. They're going to have to decide whether this is something that they still want to pass on to the planning board. And like I said, it's, we talked about a joint meeting so we get everybody's input on it. If it doesn't look good, then.
Yeah, I think, I think the timing on that, right, if it can hold off until July for a joint meeting. That just works really well for things of this nature. And maybe that's just, I mean, I think it's a good concept moving forward if there are things like this. Even if it's outside our normal schedule of joint meetings, let's just do it, have a joint meeting. And I think that helps everybody from the get go.
I think it's really important that we all hear the same presentation. Because, you know, one presentation here and one there, little different, little.
You get a presentation to the trustees, you get feedback from them. They say, oh, well, go to the, go to the planning board. Okay, well now they've got feedback from the trustees and they tailored their message for us. That's not the message the trustees got and that's, yeah, we should have won that, yeah. If he said, no, yeah. Right, exactly, you're like, yes.
Oh, yes.
I guess with that, we can, we can go around and chat about just various topics that people have. Pat, I'm gonna start with you. You've got to have something, there's at least one thing.
Your swan song.
Well, I'm gonna miss you folks. Yeah, that's about all I've got.
I am moving to Ireland for two years.
Two years, oh.
Yep, it's only two years. It's, my husband's going for graduate school. So we're just gonna go for a couple of years and then come back. So I will be traveling starting in August. So I will not be able to be here after mid-August.
So you stay with us until August?
I will stay with you until August if you'd like to have me.
They have Zoom in Ireland.
What's the time difference?
Four hours.
It would be midnight, no, between midnight and one right now, depending on the.
Are you a night purse?
I'm.
I suspected as much. It wouldn't be a problem for her.
Night person, so, but it's a, it's a two-year stint and then, and we'll, you know, probably rent our house out. So if you know anybody who wants to rent a house, we will be setting it up for that.
Lots to give them, local government.
Maybe, that'd be lovely. So we'll be renting out the house.
So Yamela, your last meeting that you'll attend will be the last.
It'll probably be a joint meeting, maybe.
It'll probably be the joint meeting. Yeah, I'm not sure if we're leaving like August 10th or August 12th, or somewhere around that range.
And July, you're out here.
And they said there were a couple of programs he wanted to get into, did he get into the like?
Yeah. He, he got into the, the one that he wanted most.
That's great.
So for anybody I told one year I misspoke, it's two.
It's two years.
Congratulations. So the last, the last planning board meeting is actually the 29th of July. Okay, so you know.
Wow, there you go.
That's as close a week after as you could ask for.
Yep, so through July I'll be here.
She'll be on Zoom with a bunch of back boxes in the background like, uh.
Yeah, no, the other program, he had two programs he was deciding between. The one was a one year. This one's a two year.
Anything else?
That's about it. That's big enough for.
That's a big one.
Oh my gosh.
Lisa?
I don't know if I have anything.
Is there anything with the Greenway Kennedy, anything or the comp plans? Nothing's going on with them, looking at you because I know you're.
She's, I'm the. No, but we're supposed to meet Thursday.
Okay.
We're, we're still working on, working on the goals actually, focusing on the goals now.
I'll jump right over to you next because, yeah, Lisa, I'll think of something.
Well, no, you know, I, we have, went to, we were talking at the community party annual meeting.
Can you even call that a, a meeting?
Well, sort of was a meeting, it was, we didn't have a quote, so we couldn't make any decisions. But it ended up being kind of a discussion about the village and it was like, you know, I kept, keeps thinking, there's got to be something we can do with our code to encourage people to maintain their properties better. Or how do we move some of these? We were just discussing, you know, we brought this up a couple of times already. Our deadbeat hotel sites, what can we do about this? There's got to be something that we can.
I can just continue to cite them for their violations the observance.
When a lot of.
Are they protected by state law in some way?
Can, can I, can I suggest something? So there's a precedent in the city of Vifica that had to do with their fees that they charge. So for instance, if you are doing construction, you have to close a street and you close a sidewalk, you pay X number of dollars per day. And if you have to close sidewalk and take a parking space, it's X number, you know, more. And then if you have sidewalk and parking space and streets, even more. They jacked up the fees astronomically in 2018 from one day to the next. And I was doing calculations for the developer of the city center building because we had calculated our fees and our mobilization for the construction based on having the road closed. It was going to be an extra $120,000.
Whoa.
$120,000 difference over the course of, I mean, this is an 18 month build, so it's a long time. But that's enough to move the needle to have developers say, oh, you know what? Let's rethink this. So we have the power in our fee structure to begin to put either an escalating price or a high price on certain things. So it might be, if it's escalating, it might be first violation is this much and second is that much and third and fourth and so on. And as you go up, the, the number grows exponentially. So it becomes, you know, much more important to address the issue right away. Or you just have very high fees that aren't exponential over time. But one of those, those kinds of fees can make a really big difference to how someone manages their property. So whatever power we have to, to change our fee structure, and the thing is, we don't want to make it hard. People, things happen, people, you know, damage happens to a building, a tornado comes through and you maybe can't mobilize right away to fix something and so you have a violation. So it's not about that first violation being onerous, it's about the second or the third or the fourth and so on.
Not doing anything.
Yeah.
At one point.
What's a violation?
Well, it, it just, I guess it depends on how we want to structure it. We, we have some freedom to decide what we charge in terms of, you know, fees.
If you issue a notice of violation that goes unanswered for 30 days, then the penalty.
Then you go to.
That occurs.
And you have to go to court.
Yes, that's the issue is that we tend to not litigate them.
Well, is, was it, did I miss something? We were talking about empty buildings and stuff like that. Is this what we're still trying to do or are we talking about doing, doing violations through property maintenance? Like I say, their parking lot's not great.
I can think of.
I'm trying to.
Speaking of that, I suggested, I would really love a sign writing Graham Road.
Oh, they've already issued a violation.
Where, no, where our pavement and saying you are now leaving, you are now entering mall property.
The village.
I said, I would love a sign like that because people think it's.
I had somebody ask me the other day, they're like, can you do something about the mall parking lot? I'm like, doing what we can.
They haven't, they haven't thrown any asphalt in yet, Mike, I've been watching.
No, they haven't.
Holes are just getting bigger.
But I see what you meant, I, I understand.
Not so deep, you can't see the color.
Yeah, but down by BJ's, that, that one is like bad.
I said, the only thing that works is if you fall into one of the axle, you've got to go after the mall, but that.
Yeah, good luck.
Pretty futile, but you know, the, the danger is if somebody like on a motorcycle or something, the entire tire would go in there. I mean, I don't know. At any rate, I bet you're right, that would be more maintenance, wouldn't it? What we're talking about, I guess. But I just keep thinking, there's got to be something we can do.
Yeah, but that abandoned building that we're all talking about, that is an eyesore.
But it's not just that one, there's a bunch of them.
Well, like the Friendly's, what about the Friendly's building?
That one, Friendly's. It's not an eyesore though, I mean, like that, that one though, they, like this one.
Oh yeah, that one.
I mean, yeah.
I agree.
Friendly's you could look at and say, oh, it looks like I could open up a business there.
Somebody needs to put a.
If you have a motel, no.
No.
Sorry. You don't look at that and say, oh, that looks structurally sound, because it doesn't and you know better.
No, no, that should be like.
Okay, so.
But I think there might be a couple of different things here, right? One is, right, the condition of.
Think about somehow.
It's almost like the, the condition of infrastructure around the village is one thing. And then the other one is, yeah, I mean, buildings that clearly are falling apart.
Well, at one point, could a, could a building be, be condemned and, and raised?
Yes, have eminent areas be in condition where it could possibly fall down. I mean, I can't look at the trip hotel, I can't look at the trip hotels and say, hey, that building.
It doesn't look, it doesn't look like it's gonna fall, well, most of it doesn't look.
Condemned? Department, is it? It doesn't meet code, right? Isn't it like condemned?
It's not occupied though, yeah.
Shut down right now. And it can't be occupied.
Yep, because there's.
I just wonder what the motivation for keeping it, it's just a task.
I mean, there might be some benefit in Ronnie speaking to the owners.
I, I suggested that, I said, is it out of the realm?
Is there anything that we can do to assist you or what is your?
That's what I suggested.
Just to get information and let them know that we notice these things and it's not something that we want.
Constituents are inquiring, that's what I said.
There's programs in the county too that can help with some of those things, I mean, potentially could.
Well, it still bothers me, I just keep thinking we've got it, it's just not, it's not improving, it's getting worse and worse.
That's, I mean, that is a great piece of property.
Somebody could really do something with that.
Which, which one?
Where the trip hotel is or whatever.
Yeah, or the old share.
Yeah, I mean, it really is, it's, you know, walkable to.
The 20 BOMAX.
Right, it's near housing, it's near.
61 unit apartment building right there.
I don't think so, there's enough apartments over in that area.
Do we have any more information about who would be going in to Applebee's?
It is a Mexican restaurant.
Do we know specifically?
Are they from out of town or?
I have the name, I don't have it in front of me, but I do have the name of it.
Another Mexican.
They are known, the last, well, I had some emails this week with the owner. They have gone through and they seem to have the trend of following Applebee's because their setup inside is the same as what a Mexican restaurant looks like. So they basically just go in and change out the seating and all that kind of stuff.
Literally, literally sounds like cheese from when I was.
National chain?
I have not heard, I have not heard of it, I actually have one.
Oh no, when you said that they, they tend to follow Applebee's, you know, there's other.
Yeah, I'll find a point in a second.
Yeah, well, see, I mean, at this point though too, what do you have? You've got a, a permit for one.
For that?
Yeah.
I doubt very much I should be coming here.
Right, yeah, I mean.
Yes, the same.
So you've got, yeah, you've got a name, it's not a, yeah, it's not a, yeah.
So it's not a change of use, it's not anything, so we don't get involved at all?
I doubt.
Could that, could that though hurt the Mexican restaurant that's in the mall as well as the?
Or the one right next to it.
I don't know.
I was hoping it was them moving.
I know, but, but Zokow owns Old Mexico downtown.
You know, I asked somebody about that because I listened, or I'd heard that, you were somebody and they said that they, they have no relationship.
No, that's not true because I asked somebody and they told me, somebody that used to work for Zokow told me that they.
Downtown, the mall location, the College Town location, the new location.
They have College Town?
There's an Old Mexico, there's an Old Mex, a small one, in, very small, in College Town. But it's southern.
Where are the College Town?
Right where, like subway, that kind of area there as you go down through College Town on the bend there as you go down.
Before you go over the bridge.
Drive and Road, Drive and Road? I think so.
We survived.
Yeah, we made it through.
Yeah, the sun is setting.
Coming up, it's crazy. Lost my.
I found stop beep. Okay.
No, I, I will, yeah.
Lorraine, what else you got?
I didn't have anything. No, I know it's hard to believe. Hey, I've been busy in court the last two days.
I don't have anything other than the questions that I've asked.
Eight hours there each day.
Done?
Yeah, I didn't get picked. But I couldn't, we couldn't leave because they were trying to fill, it was crazy. They were trying to.
Two days it took to numb.
Yeah.
Usually you get missed after the four days, let me tell you. Well, you're done it for a while.
Of course, after being there for two days, I didn't want to leave.
It's called Adelitas.
Were you?
Never heard of them. What is it?
Adelitas.
I don't watch, I mean.
That's true.
Well.
We did that.
It's Mike's turn.
They have a Camillus location. They have a Camillus location.
Nice. Wait, who?
Adelitas, Mexican, Pachina and Tequila.
What, what was it or how do you spell that name?
A-D-E-L-I-T-A-S, Adelitas.
I've never heard of that.
They have more than one location, Pittsburgh, Camillus, Victor, yeah, so, I mean, up that way.
Oh, okay, so they've got places.
Um, any, I don't have any, I just had questions. Anything on like the new, like Ross Dress for Less, anything, updates on that? They're clearly doing stuff up there.
They have mobilized, they have basically gutted the place. They have installed a separation in the sprinkler system for two value. And they are moving on items right now. Place is cleared out, kind of looks like the vet clinic when they did that.
Any other updates on anything in that plaza there?
What, what's left still?
Big lots down at the end.
Oh, big lots still, that's right. Is there something in the corner, right where it turns?
Friends and foe.
Near builder's best.
Me again about a restaurant, next to Constanter, I don't know anything more about that.
You mean where the Chinese restaurant used to be?
Yes, Friends and Fall or whatever.
That's all I know.
Anything with, I'll say the big mall?
So, so Park Grove, so I know you told me that you haven't gotten anything from yet, done yet, but.
No, I expected them to be here at this meeting, they didn't meet the deadline. They got me some items, but not enough to be at the, at the end of the agenda.
Do you think maybe next time? I'd hate for them to come on the Tuesday, I'm not going to be.
It's hard to say, when we were in, when we were in February, March, it was a rush to get here and now.
Well, I think they're probably busy with library for this, is my guess.
So as I do, I'll send, I'll send everything to planning board and the board trustees.
So for that, Mike, when they do have everything in, before you say, yes, you're on the agenda for whatever, can you let us know? Because I agree with Lorraine, same sort of thing. I'd like everyone to be here for that discussion. So if that's the meeting they get on, let's push them to the next.
Yeah, because Jim won't be here either, and it's, and it's, actually, it's the day after Memorial Day weekend, so.
So if that's the one that they want to be on, let's push them to the one after that, because we will, I'd, like I said, I'd rather everyone be here for that discussion.
So both Lorraine and Jim are away on the May one, the last.
The last.
The last one of May, yeah.
I think I'm here for that. I spoke.
It's the 27th, Lisa.
Any other questions, Lorraine? Don't worry, I'll give you a chance to share everything you want to share.
Oh, I'm done sharing.
I'll let you know, I'll let you know when I see them filling in the asphalt tomorrow.
Like I said, they've got a, they've got a violation notice, so we'll see.
Okay, nothing else you want to?
I'm good.
Natalie, anything you want to share?
No, my news was just all about Eric.
That's exciting.
That's exciting.
Progress. Okay, um, so the other item under other businesses, Deb Dawson's here, thanks for coming, Deb. It was perfect timing, I was worried one of the, one of the other people didn't show up, so, I was like, oh, no, we have to do it. So Deb has expressed interest on being on the planning board, so she's previously been on the planning, planning board, I think, thank you, Jim, for letting me know that you were an alternate when she was here, so was me, Jim, and Lisa, but I chatted through the other night, and invited her to come here and just, you know, chat with us, and obviously give people a chance to talk. I know there's been some other discussion about potential planning board members, so after Deb has a chance to chat with us, and y'all can ask questions, we will adjourn to executive session to have a chat about.
Potential appointments.
Potential appointments to the planning board, but.
Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, first of all, I apologize for being late. We had our first budget retrieved from the county, it's looking grim. Anyway, yeah, so as you may know, this is the last year that I'm going to be on the county legislature, and before I was on the legislature, I was on the planning board with several of you, actually. I think I, mid-2014, I became an alternate, and then 2015, I finally got to be a real planning board member. So my experience has been that the work that you all do is the most interesting work in the village, and it's really important, and I really enjoyed it, I'd like to do it again if you'll have me. I wanted to fill you in a little bit on the experiences that I've had on the legislature that might be relevant to me serving on the planning board. I chaired the Planning, Energy, and Environmental Quality Committee for a couple of years, I've served on the Soil and Water Conservation Institute Board, the TCAD Board, the IDA Board, and I think in the process of doing those things, I've developed connections in the community and in the county that might be helpful on this board. I was also on the Planning Advisory Board with Yamila, that's, I think, where I met you, so.
That might have been, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So anyhow, I would really love to get back on the planning board, it was a great experience, and I would enjoy serving with all of you again if you'll have me.
Thanks, Deb. Questions, Pat, anybody here, anything you want to know? Well, maybe not anything, but, yeah. Questions you might have as it pertains to Deb and the planning board?
I already know.
I was going to say.
Having been one of the people that, I mean, Deb and I worked together on the comp plan.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
That is the current comp plan. That was the major thing, I think, other than that, it was just business as usual with all our various things, but also has she experienced the Lansing Meadows situation?
Oh, yeah, that carried over into the IDA, that was.
Yes, and then, so, you know, yeah, she knows the drill, certainly does.
I also served on the Greenway Committee, I forgot about that one, when we were doing Hartel Park, which was interesting, yeah.
Lorraine or Jim, honey?
I, I don't have anything, because I, you know, I was the alternate, in fact, I think it was when you took over your legislative duties that I got elevated to being a member of somebody. I think I was, I don't know if I was here for a full year, but it was, it was a while.
Yeah.
I think I sat there, Deb sat there.
And I was over there.
So Deb, sorry to ask you this, because I know you already said it, but you said you first started as an alternate?
Yes.
And then you became a planning board member, so when was that?